First of all, we want to welcome everyone and thank you for coming to this town meeting. The purpose for having it is to present you some information and then to allow you all to ask whatever questions you have about what is going on with our research, with the lawsuit, with whatever issue you may want to ask about. It's an open forum. The only rule is that we remain polite and that we... but that's basically the only rule. Given that it's Memorial Day, we thought it would be appropriate to start our town meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I've asked Principal Kissel from Gibsonburg High School if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So Danny? He's bringing his mother-in-law down, who's one of the cancer victims. Please stand and remove your caps. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just so I have a sense and we have a sense of who's here. Who here is from Clyde? Okay? And who here is from Greensprings? Any other communities represented? Fremont? Okay. We're going to start first of all just by introducing the people that are part of the lawsuit that was filed last week and give them a moment, a short moment, to explain their situation. And then we'll...I'm going to go through a PowerPoint that presents some information. I'll try to get through that quickly so that we can get to the question and answer session which y'all came for. So Warren and Wendy, you want to start?
You know that I'm Warren Brown and with me is my wife Wendy. I also have our son Ethan and Amanda in the crowd tonight. We're here because I absolutely refused to reneg on a promise that I made to Alexa within weeks of her passing away. I laid down next to her and I said, "Your death will not be in vain." We will find an answer to this cancer cluster. We will not leave a stone unturned. We will not relent until every window and door is nailed shut. I will not reneg on the promise I made to our 11-year-old sister and our 11-year-old daughter.
Dave?
I'm Dave Heisey. My daughter Ciara. A lot of you know us. But thank you guys for coming out today. As you know, I've had two children with leukemia. We're searching for answers. We've been on this journey for quite a while. I believe that we're trying to follow the science here and we're trying to get some answers. So thank you for coming.
Diana?
Hello, I'm Megan Whitehead and my family has actually owned the property, my in-law family, since the early 1950s. My mother-in-law that has been there permanently since 1958 has suffered from numerous illnesses, including a double mastectomy duodenary cancer. Her mother that lived there for 20 years with us, died with liver and colon and pancreatic cancer. I married my husband in the mid-'80s and we moved 1,200 feet just to the west of the park, rock family property. And we've had fertility problems, like had cells, gastric cells, and partnership dysentery. My son, my oldest son, was born with developmental disabilities. My middle son was born with something that's very similar to it, that looked like Tourette's Syndrome. He was bounced around from doctor to doctor trying to figure out what was wrong with him and then when he found out about the park, he just wants some answers.
Steve?
Keller's?
Yes, I'm Steve Keller, Cole Keller's grandpa. My wife Nancy. It's good that you're here tonight. I thought I'd mention this. Since Cole's passing and really when he got sick, he had surgery December 2nd, 2005, I've really been into researching things, looking at things. Aaron Brockovich put us in touch with the firm she worked for, the West Coast. I presented what I knew about the case because I researched a lot of things at the Northwest Ohio EPA. My prayer was, "God, show me that there's nothing there or there's a lot there." Okay? There's a lot there. They turned it down. I went to the East Coast, Whites and Luxembourg, spent seven hours personally in their office. They believed something was there, but they rejected it. Al and Charles being here is a God thing. They searched us out, okay? And you know, the National EPA has helped us with the boars they did at the Whirlpool Park. So I just thought I'd give you a little history on that.
I'd like to say that we don't live in Clyde, we don't live in Greensprings. We're here for you people out there.
Amen.
We don't want any of you going through what we went through to lose our grandson. And I live in Oak Harbor. We live in Oak Harbor and we're here for you.
Thanks Nancy.
It's a great small town.
My name is Cindy McGilton. My son Bob Andrews was diagnosed with a brain tumor in February of 2010. He died in March of 2012. He was invincible to me. I was one of these people that aren't here today. I was one of these people that thought it could not happen to my child, could not happen to one of mine. I'm here today for those people that think it cannot happen to your child. I'm there for you people that say it's not real. Because it wasn't real to me. It wasn't real to me until it took my rock, my oldest son. The guy that was going to provide for me, the guy that would be there for me for my whole life because he promised me that. And I gave him up. I gave him back to God. That's who I'm here for. And I'm here because that's what he would want me to be for. We're here for you.
My name is Angie McGrady and I'm here for my two daughters, four-year-old Sage McGrady and 10-year-old Brianna McGrady. Four-year-old Mariana, or I'm sorry, four-year-old Sage has neutropenia and immunodeficiency. I'm her voice right now for her. I'm the one who's trying to explain to you all, as they've all said as well. She goes through the pain, I see the suffering in her eyes, and I can't help her. I need to know why she's going through that and what I can do to stop any other child to go through what she's been through and what she's going to have to go through for the rest of her life. As well as my 10-year-old daughter Brianna McGrady, who has Crohn's disease. The treatments that she goes through, the suffering that she goes through, nobody else should have to go through this. So we're just here to get answers like all of you as well. And thanks for coming out.
First and foremost, I'm very thankful for Mr. Mortensen and his firm that's working with him to find the answers to all this. That's an important thing, but the most important thing I'm here for is these folks' children. I lost a son myself and I know exactly what it's like to lose a child. I lived...when people would ask me where I lived, I would say, "I live..." Oh, I live in Whirlpool Park. I thought it was pretty cool. I called it Lasada. In that little, that's called place of peace. And I farmed, I had animals, I grew garden. I'm an avid gardener. Three acres of land I farmed. My son that's in the audience, he had a severe case of diverticulitis in 2008, almost died because of our well water. While I lived there, from 1997 to 2001, I had cancer three times. I'm still...I'm blind in my left eye. One of my cancers, of all places, wanted to settle in my eye, a big tumor. I came out of remission and I always knew, I knew, but I didn't act on it. I thought, well...I took pictures, I mean, I took pictures, I chased the trucks down. I'm going to say it, I don't know if I'm allowed to say that, but I chased those trucks down, told them, "What are you doing? What are you doing? You better not be dumping any chemicals back there." And they would like flip me off or something. And then...but I'm alive and I'm going to be a spokesperson and I'm going to get some justice for these little people that have lost their lives and that are sick. And some people are going to answer all this because I'm still suffering. I still have medical things and rung, medical bills, and we're going to take care of this corporation.
We also have some clients up in the audience who are here in support, but they don't necessarily want to share their story in public yet. And that's certainly understandable because it is a difficult issue to address. I'm going to go ahead and get started and I prepared a short...well, I might...I hope it's short. I'm going to try to get through it quickly to kind of explain where everyone's been because I'm afraid that some of that's been lost in this, in the filings of the lawsuit. Back in 2009, these parents were told by the Ohio State University that this cancer cluster, there was a 95% probability it was caused by an external source. At that point in time, it caused these families to say, you know, "We have to find what it is. This is not just an act of God, this is, there's an external source that's causing this." Having this many children with cancer in a small town like Clyde just doesn't happen. So they went from their 95% statistical probability and they went to, "What is the source?" Now, there's been some speculation in the media. I see the news messenger community torn. I've seen some horrible, horrible things on social media that have been said about my clients. And I'm going to be an advocate here. These people didn't start with a lawsuit. They started the right way. They started back, and here's the timeline. It's available for y'all in a thumb drive that I put together. They started with the Ohio Department of Health back in 2007. And then they went to the Ohio EPA, which Steve told me about. By the way, Steve, last time I was in this gym, my basketball coach was talking just like you and I threw up. So if I get through today without throwing up, I'm good. Steve was a basketball coach at Oak Harbor and I kind of had PTSD with that voice. But they did the right thing and they went to the Ohio EPA. The Ohio EPA did all this supposed research and what they came up with in 2011 is, "Well, we'll share the results of the cancer profile with the parents of the children and we'll post things on their websites." If you have a child that's sick or died of cancer and the Ohio State University's told you there's a 95% probability it's caused by something in the environment, that's not acceptable. And they started looking at more known dump sites. These are known dump sites where Whirlpool dumped. Additional sites were evaluated by the US EPA. Everyone's aware, or most everyone's aware, I'm sure, of the recent developments. In 2012 September, they found nine and a half feet of black sludge full of PCBs at the Whirlpool Park. It was posted on the webpage, EPA webpage, at the end of October. Families found out about it shortly after the election, shortly after any political pressure for Lisa Jackson to follow up was gone. So again, these families, they weren't looking at a lawsuit. They were looking at getting the government that was supposed to protect them to do their job. The Browns went to Washington several times. They've had meetings with Senator Brown. They have wanted answers and they've tried to get answers the right way. The Whirlpool parking was a big deal because it confirmed some of the suspicions that there was things being hid and all of the problems haven't been found yet. Again, they found PCBs far in excess of what's allowed under the law. Something that most, a lot of people aren't aware of, and I don't quite understand why because Whirlpool factory is right in the middle of Clyde, is that the EPA also found PCBs at a level above the US EPA regional screening levels. Arsenic was detected and dichloromethane was detected, all above acceptable EPA amounts. And again, the families were like, "What's up?" And the Ohio, or the US EPA said, "Well, it's private property, there's a fence around it, so they don't need to do anything." And they're like, "Well, what about the wind? What about the water? What about Raccoon Creek? What about the workers that go there? Why isn't any kind of cleanup required?" That's still there. That's sitting there in the middle of Clyde, right by the bike path and right by the railroad tracks, right by the Raccoon Creek. Nothing's, again, nothing's being done. Again, soil samples that had arsenic above the regional permissible levels, it may be naturally occurring. We're not saying that it isn't, but again, that needs to be investigated. If there's arsenic there that shouldn't be there, it's above what's normally found, it needs to be removed. Boron, again, was detected there. EPA required nothing, said everything's been, everything's handled. The Clyde dump site, the old dump site, this is one of the most shocking. Arsenic, PCBs, boron, antimony, cadmium, cobalt, iron, lead, manganese, all in levels above acceptable EPA levels. They said, "You know what? It's been buried, they've got soil on top of it." Even though if you go down to the Raccoon Creek, you can see the leachate going into the creek. So again, EPA, US EPA has required nothing. Whirlpool's putting out on their webpage that samples from the Whirlpool-Clyde facility showed no contamination. Well, that's not true. There was plenty of contamination found, just EPA is not requiring them to remove When we filed our lawsuit last week and brought that to their attention, they changed their webpage and said, "There's a contaminant," but nowhere is the word PCB mentioned. It's just they use the word contaminant. I mean, manure can be a contaminant. It's PCB. PCBs are known to be carcinogens. The science is good on that. The issue there is how the people would have gotten it and that's what, that's one of the issues we're working on. Women that have swam, that used to swim out at the park can pass that on to their fetuses through the umbilical cord. Other dump sites are causing concern. The leach dump, which Whirlpool actually has a first right to buy back, they went in to dug out half of a hill because they used it to dump for so many years. I went out there with my daughter, I'll never take my kids out there again, but there's green, it's fluorescent green water. I started looking at Google Map and there's this dark, or there's this, there's this dead spot. And it's not a lowland, so it's not dead because of water, but nothing ever grows there. And you can see even after the harvest, there was nothing there. And that's, and then that green water was what was seeping up. That's causing concern. These are what these families are dealing with. Then the Whirlpool Park with, we find out about the PCBs, we start investigating the people that lived there. Sherri told you her situation. She lived at the home that the Farleys live in right now. And we're going to talk about the Farleys in just a second. And Sherri's been through horrible, horrible, horrible medical course with her cancer. Diane, Diana, I'm sorry, I misplugged your name again. Diana told us about her cancer and her sons and all that they've been through and her mother-in-law. Again, these are, this is all property that abuts the Whirlpool Park. Phoebe Pinion has ovarian cancer. Norma Mead, who lived right across the creek, had breast and uterine cancer. She lives uptown now, but she got these cancers, again, when she was living right next to the park. So I think there's another cluster going on and it's surrounding the Whirlpool Park. Herb and Renee Farley bought Sherri's home and once, I kind of jumped forward here. We found out last week they're trying to refinance and the bank won't let them refinance unless they do extensive soil testing at a huge cost because of what's next to them. And so, you know, thank goodness they haven't, they haven't been drinking their water, even though both of their dogs died of cancer within two weeks of each other. They were five years old. So their home and property's been greatly stigmatized and that's the legal term, and has lost its value. We found barrels of PTFE out on the other, right across the creek, on the other side of the road a couple of weeks ago. They actually had bill of ladings on them and showed the, oops, there's the video. I was afraid someone would say, "Prove it." But we found the barrel out there and...
They put this in there.
And it shook, and the barrel had the identification of the actual PTFE, which is, basically it's liquid Teflon, it's used to lubricate a lot of the machinery, highly, it's a suspected carcinogen. So that's another discovery. So basically, there's this, I call it a stained glass window. We have 14 dump sites. We have this big plant. We have a cancer cluster of children. We have a cancer cluster of people out by the park. And everyone tries to segment each little thing so it doesn't make sense, but if you put it all together, it makes a lot of sense. And you just have to put it together and shine some light on it and you see the picture. This has kind of been the big hot topic in the news and kind of the debate on some of the social media was the benzaldehyde that was found in the attic dust testing that our clients did as we were looking for a common source for this childhood cancer. Benzaldehyde, just so everyone knows, it's not something that you go to the store and buy to put in cherry pie or your whipped cream, despite what the Ohio Health Department put out. And I'm really ticked off at the Ohio Health Department because they're supposed to protect you guys and for them to belittle what we found, we paid for and we gave to them, is upsetting. And they did, they're dilatory in their job and whoever did that should be fired. At a bare minimum, they should come out and test it. They have a chance to come out and test benzaldehyde, come out and test these children because you can't test people for cancer by injecting them like you're injecting rats and mice who do die from cancer when they get it. But they put out this, well, first of all, New Jersey's worried about it and if they're worried about it in New Jersey, we probably should be worried about it here. Because we know who runs the solid waste out there. There's a lot of new research that benzaldehyde is a suspected carcinogen despite what everyone's been saying. Some of it's coming from Europe. The University of California, again, did testing, showed that it killed, it killed rats, it didn't kill mice, it killed rabbits. Some more of our literature, again, we attached this to our lawsuit. We attached it so that everyone knew we weren't just up in the night on the benzaldehyde issue. And the benzaldehyde is the first substance of commonality amongst all of the children. And it's indicative that they were all breathing the air that had the benzaldehyde in it. The fact that it's in the attic, probably as long as it's undisturbed, isn't as dangerous as the fact as how it got there. And it got there through the air with the kids playing. You know, why release the results now? When we got the results, we were supposed to have a press conference. I promised the whole world that we were going to release the results. We got this back and we were like, "Holy crap, what are we going to do with this?" We don't want to cause mass hysteria. So we went to the EPA, the US EPA, we went to the Ohio EPA, we went to the Ohio Health Department, we went to the Sandusky Health Department. We didn't file a lawsuit. We went to those folks and we said, "Hey, here's our, here's our results. You want to work with us and try to figure out where this came from?" And we got a, basically, "You're kind of stupid. Thank you, no thank you." Which caused a lot of urgency because our clients want to clean their attics. But if you're involved in litigation, you know, you have to let the other side have a chance. We want Whirlpool to have a chance to do any testing they wanted to. So we filed the lawsuit, we gave them the chance, they rejected it. So now our attics can be cleaned. But that comes at a cost. This is the thing that really ticked me off that I was referring to earlier. The day after we filed our lawsuit, the Ohio Department of Health put this thing out on benzaldehyde with gelatin and blueberry muffins and cherries and shampoo. First of all, there's a movement afoot to remove benzaldehyde from all this stuff anyway, but those are such a miniscule amount that, that's not what we're talking about here. We're not talking about using some shaving cream and somehow it got up into the attic. The government, the Center for Disease Control says that to be able to clean up this stuff, this, you know, cherry pie, you have to have filter respirators for organic gases and vapors, which we're dealing with in the attics. You have to collect leaking liquid in sealable containers. You have to absorb remaining liquid in sand or inert absorbent and remove to a safe place. Do not let the chemical enter the environment. It's hardly, it's hardly gelatin and cherry pie. Again, on the next page, the Ohio Health Department says that 5,000 parts per million for children and 70,000 parts per million for an adult in residential soils is okay. We don't necessarily disagree with that. 78 parts per million and 1,000 parts per million for industrial soils is okay. We don't necessarily disagree with that. What we found in our attics was 1,2,900 parts per billion or 129,622,000 parts per million. So we're talking six times the amount that the Ohio, that the Ohio Health Department on their, on their fact sheet put together, that's what we're talking about here. We're not talking about trace amounts as has been reported by the Ohio Health Department. And again, I wouldn't fault, I would not fault Whirlpool for putting this out. Every side, you know, it's a really flat pancake that doesn't have two sides. That's what a lawsuit's about and they have the right to defend themselves. But for the Ohio Health Department to come out and do this, I think is blatant neglect on their part and it shows really who they're protecting. And that's why these families are frustrated because from the very beginning of this thing, they've been, the people that are responsible for this have been protected by the government. The government is supposedly protecting them. And the greatest thing about our country is when that happens, people can file lawsuits and we go in front of juries and it's people like you who decide what's right and wrong. And it's people like these people that got the pinno off the market, they got asbestos off the market, they're getting cigarettes, so they're warned right. It's these people that are brave like this and that's what juries do. It's these people that are brave like this and that's what juries do. And that's why I'm proud to represent these folks and I'm not embarrassed that they filed a lawsuit, because they went through every single possible avenue to try to fix this problem before we got here. And so I'm, I'm upset at our government. I'm really upset at our government. I think they let these people down. And so they're taking matters in their own hands and we're gonna let the people decide. The people. And that's a jury up in federal court in Toledo. And that's a wonderful protection from our own government.